Good evening, everyone. It is 6:06 and I'd like to call the April 24th Regular Meeting of the Board of Education, Cape Girardeau School District, to order. All board members are present except Casey Cook. And let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Okay, you have before you an agenda? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second?
Um, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay, motion seconded and carried. Um, let's begin with recognitions.
Well, we have a plethora of recognitions tonight, let me tell you, which is a great thing. It's great to be a Tiger this time of year. Uh, I'm excited to have Mr. Jacob White. Mr. White, come on forward. Uh, he is our choir director from Cape Central High with us tonight to celebrate our All-State Choir Honories. Uh, we want to congratulate Cheyenne Higgs and Aiden Winkler for being named to All-State Choir, along with Talia Bowman and Emily Dickinson for being named All-State Alternates. Mr. White, you want to say a few words?
Absolutely.
On behalf of these fine young-
Oh, I'm so excited to do it.
I guarantee it.
(laughing) Yeah, so this group started working, okay, they started working back in September on some solos that they were practicing after school, and they were working on some theory skills and some sight reading, so they did an audition to make the All-District Choir, where they had to perform a solo, practice some of their theory skills, and sing a song that they had never seen before. And all four of these students made it into that choir. They take about 100 students from our district, which is about 63 different schools that are part of that. And then those that get a part of that get to audition for the All-State Choir. So, for that, they had to learn a really difficult piece of Latin music that we lost a lot of sleep over, and then we had four of our students that made that. So can I welcome them up here to congratulate them?
Please do.
So let's start with Emily Dixon. She was named as one of our alternates for that.[160.19][160.19](applause) She'll be performing this summer in Springfield with Andre Thomas, and it's gonna be a really awesome experience. I'd also want to recommend our acknowledged Talia Bowman for making alternate for that as well.[176.87][176.87](applause) And then a few other achievements that are pretty cool is both of our next students received solo awards at All-Districts. So there was three solos that were given at the All-District performance, and Cheyenne Higgs was one of those three.[194.65][194.65](applause) And she got to perform this past January in Tanterra Resort at Lake of the Ozarks with just 200 of the best singers in the state of Missouri, which is really awesome. And Aiden Winkler was also one of our solo awards.[212.12][212.12](applause) And he also performed with the Tanterra Resort. So let me get some certificates, we'll take some pictures, and then we'll be seated.
(inaudible) 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 Congratulations.[255.31][255.31](applause) (inaudible) 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 I believe you have a performance coming up, too?
That's correct.
All right. That is, I've got on my notes, May 12th at 7:00 PM, you can catch him live and in concert.
Yes, May 13th.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. White, for all you do. With us tonight, we have two Cape Central High students that are being recognized after being named to the state's list of top academic students in the graduating class of 2023. Senior Sam Cairns and Henry Ruston have been selected for the Missouri Scholars 100 Program. Missouri Scholars 100 is a program sponsored by the Missouri Association of Secondary Principals. Students must have a minimum GPA of 3.75, have a minimum ACT score of 29, or a minimum SAT score of 1280, and rank in the upper 10% of the class. Please join me up front, gentlemen.[322.69][322.69](applause)
Paul, you need to get up there for that one.
I'm coming in, too. (laughing) (inaudible) 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 Have you picked your school yet?
Uh, we're both going to Mississippi.
Nice.
All right.
Congratulations.
Um, next up, we have Terrific Tigers.
All right, well, hang in there, please forgive me if I mispronounce any names, but we're gonna get started here tonight with Alma Schrader Elementary.
Hold on, let me say a few words first.
Uh, Dr. Neal would like to say a few words first.
Terrific Tigers, we are pleased to recognize the April Terrific Tigers. These are students from each of our buildings that have been selected or received this award based on their service to others, their leadership, and their scholarship. We also want to recognize the parents for all they do, so if we can, as we call each student forward, if you'd stand to be recognized as well, and take as many pictures as you'd like.
Well, we're gonna get started tonight with Alma Schrader Elementary with Lila Jackson, second grade daughter of Sarah and Jeremy Jackson.[422.03][422.03](applause) Lila is a joy to have in class. She always has a smile on her face and a positive attitude. She is helpful to her peers and staff members and always sets a good example for others. Lila strives to do well on her assignments and always tries her very best. Way to be a Terrific Tiger, Lila.[444.56][444.56](applause) With Blanchard Elementary, we have Ella Lynn, second grade daughter of Ashley and Matthew Ella is a wonderful example of a Terrific Tiger. She's kind and endearing with an unparalleled work ethic. She conducts herself with the highest level of integrity and is as dependable as they come. Ella's classmates and teachers think the world of her. Next up with Clifford Elementary, we have Cameron Reynolds, fourth grade son of Leah and Steve Reynolds II.
Not here. Catch her next month.
We will catch her next month. And Franklin Elementary, we have Ariana Campos Guzman, third grade daughter of Mr. Ricardo Vasquez and Blanca Campos.[502.03][502.03](applause) Ariana always strives to do the right thing. Ariana is a true role model to those around her. She is trustworthy, compassionate, and hardworking. She always follows expectations, helps others, and never gives up. Ariana is a wonderful example of Franklin, of a Franklin Elementary Terrific Tiger.[525.29][525.29](applause) Next up at Jefferson Elementary, we have Joseph Wade, fifth grade son of Crystal Wade.[535.91][535.91](applause) Joseph Wade is a fifth grader at Jefferson Elementary. He's an excellent representative of what it takes to be a Terrific Tiger. At JE, Joseph is a role model and a leader that others look up to. He's always willing to take initiative to help classmates and teachers. Joseph strives to be a problem solver when it comes to his own learning. JE is beyond proud to have Joseph leading the way in fifth and looks forward to seeing his success as he moves on to CMS next year.[570.48][570.48](applause) At Central Middle School, we have Cooper LeGrand, sixth grade son of Julie and Jonathan Cooper is a shy and quiet young man who is a thinker and very mindful of the way he interacts with his peers and teachers. CMS is thankful for everything this student does for others and the bright light he shines in our school, in our school on a daily basis. Congratulations to our roaring Tiger. Keep up the great work, Cooper.[604.88][604.88](applause) At the Terry W. Kitchen Junior High, we have Juliana Ori- Ori- Orianna Peralta?[616.79][616.79](laughing) Sorry about that. Eighth grade daughter of Florencia Peralta Salinas and Ronell Orianna.[623.54][623.54](applause) Juliana has a positive and hardworking attitude that sets an excellent example for everyone around her. She uses her bilingual skills to tutor and assist other students who are still learning English. She's an asset to our school and our district. Congratulations, Juliana, and keep up the great work.[643.79][643.79](applause) At Central High School, we have Megan Maxson, 12th grade daughter of Jaclyn and David Maxson. We'll catch Megan next month? At Central Academy, we have Zaireke Child, 12th grade son of Ashley Mackens. We'll look forward to Zaireke next month. From February, do we have from Central Middle School, Clay Anna Fly?
Right.
Right.[673.00][673.00](applause) Fifth grade daughter of Anitra Fly? Anitra, thank you. CMS March Terrific Tiger goes with someone who has proven to be a great role model for her peers, a role model who is wise and mature beyond her years, a role model who has shown there isn't much she can't do when she puts her mind to it. We happily announce our kind and caring student, Clay Anna Fly, as Central Middle School Terrific I believe these are actually from March, right? Uh, Central Academy, uh, that was Central, let's see, Central High School. We have Madison Morris here tonight?
(inaudible)
All right, what about Demarius Tate Sproles? All right, let's give our hand for all of our Terrific Tigers now.[724.57][724.57](applause)
(inaudible) 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 Congratulations to you all.[768.57][768.57](applause)
(inaudible) 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 A great escape.
Okay, next on the agenda is information, proposals, or comments from?
(inaudible)
All right, um, moving on, we have informational reports. And first up is board president report, which I'm brand new, so I don't have enough information yet to give you a report.[847.00][847.00](laughing) Um, okay, next is a superintendent's report.
All right, I got quite a bit.[852.63][852.63](laughing)
For me.
Again, uh, we have a lot to talk about, and a lot to celebrate, for that matter. Air Force JROTC cadets were out over the weekend volunteering at the annual city of Cape Friends of the Park event. This year, they helped with landscaping at Cape Splash to prepare for the opening of Memorial Day weekend. They do a fantastic job, and I know we've seen them throughout the community, but they just, they always impress me, the way they're dressed and the way they handle themselves. They're just amazing group of young men, young men and young women, and I'm just very, very proud of that, that program and that organization. Math Field Day was a huge success for our students at Cape Central High as we took home 24 awards in the large school division. Incredible work, and congratulations to these Tigers. Cape Central sophomore Chase Roberts was the runner-up in the 2023 National Wild Turkey Federation Grand Calling Championship Junior Division in Nashville, Tennessee, and that's pretty cool. Yeah. Um, CHS FBLA had 13 students competing in the state competition with two qualifying for Nationals. They got one-third in a mobile app development and one-sixth in a UX design. Congratulations to FBLA. The Cape CTC took home 27 medals in the recent Skills USA competition, including 15 first-place finishes. At the Terry W. Kitchen Central Junior High, esports is back in action with Smash Brothers team finished the season a perfect 6-0. They won the opening round of regional playoffs and will play again this Thursday to try to earn a spot in the state championship. Also, pretty cool. The Cape Girardeau Roller Derby is hosting a fundraiser for the Cape Central Middle School, Tiger Lilies, on May 6th. To help donate to the cause and catch a little bit about this in person, you can purchase tickets by visiting their website. We have three teachers who are on the team, Bree DeWitt, Delaney Cummins, and Kelly Henson. Our elementary schools begin math testing this week, so it's been fun to see how the different schools prepare and get pumped up. Of course, we had some, uh, we had some characters out front of the, the elementaries, I understand. You probably witnessed some of those. Just a couple, couple different ways that we can get our kids motivated and pumped up for the big test. We just want our, our families to remember to, to help your student by making sure they go to bed on time and get plenty of rest. Without further ado, Ms. Callie Welker from Care to Learn is in the back of the room. She wants to give us an update on, on where we're at with Care to Learn. They have been a tremendous asset to the district. They've raised a ton of money. They go right into helping our kids meet different needs, health, hygiene, and hunger. And, uh, it's, uh, just been a tremendous asset, like I said. Callie?
Thank you, guys, for having me. I recognize most of you. I feel like I should let everybody know I'm not related to the Welkers.[1030.13][1030.13](laughing) My mail says Matt Welker half the time.[1033.83][1033.83](laughing) But, thanks for having us, guys. For those of you that don't know much about Care to Learn, we do, our, our mission is super simple. If anything, health, hunger, and hygiene interferes with education, we fund it. No red tape, no, really, nothing. There's like about 10 of us that just say, like, hey, let's take care of it. We've yet to really say no to anything unless it was a break, like, or something we didn't want to cross and to, we couldn't afford to do it for, you know, everybody, that sort of situation, but, um, we're all very passionate about what we do and, um, kinda started, gosh, probably eight years ago. Doug Pitt started Care to Learn in Springfield, Missouri. It's Brad Pitt's brother. So he came over and had a group of, a lot of business owners sit in a room over at the Clap Course Building and just said, hey, we, we started this program in Springfield. We had no idea what was going on in our public schools, and our entire community just said, hey, how can we help? And they came up honestly with the most simple program I think I've ever sat and listened to, and, um, was pretty much sold right away. So, wanted to do what I could at the time, and didn't really have any money to give back, but didn't have any problem asking other people to give money to give back, so, um, that's pretty well how I got involved. Anne Cunningham, I hope most of you know her, if you don't, you should really go out of your way to, to meet her. She's a retired, she was my PE coach at, um, Washington Elementary School. So she runs around all day long as a volunteer and buys stuff at Walmart, TJ Maxx, whatever she needs to do, and funds these needs every day. So, super excited to keep doing that, and I think so far gone, done well. I actually heard a statistic the other day, I hadn't, that since we started, we've raised half a million dollars and spent 350,000 of that. A big chunk of that goes to the backpack programs every year. So, yeah, COVID was pretty fun to navigate, um, since nobody could really be in the building or do anything, but, um, coming, coming out of that and getting back involved in any way we can. Stories we hear of the schools are, are, you know, they're, they're heartwarming, wrenching. I don't really know what the right word is, but, um, just little things of putting an Under Armour hoodie on a kid, or making sure they've eaten in the morning, and like, just watching the impact that has on, on, um, taking a test during the day, or whatever that is fitting in. And I think anybody in Cape would certainly go out of their way to make sure everybody had an Under Armour hoodie, hoodie if that made that big of a difference, so. Recently, we've put braces on a high school student. Just found out Medicaid doesn't really cover that. Well, that seems pretty simple, too, something we can help with, so, um, yeah, we haven't really met any other roadblocks or anything lately, like, pretty easy and simple, so if you guys have any questions or anything, I'll be answering them, but, thanks for having me.
We appreciate all you do for our students.
If people want to get involved or donate, do they just contact you, or?
Yeah, so we just had our big fundraiser for the year, about, I don't know, three weeks ago, it kinda seems like it's longer than that. So you can donate online, carollearn.org/CapeGirardeau, just make sure it's the Cape Girardeau chapter. If you'd rather write checks, do anything like that, happy to send them. The school has the address, too. I know Kayla's been helping out, and, um, Carolyn could help either way, so, yeah. But yeah, feel free to text me, whatever.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
(inaudible) 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 Okay, now, academic services report.
Oh, that's me. All right. Well, I just, I'll, I have a really short academic report. Just wanted to update you on our CSIP progress. We have went out and visited four schools so far. We've visited with Jefferson, Alma Schrader, Central Academy, and then the ECC. And then this week, we're at Junior High and Franklin. Our objective is to make sure that we've visited every building so that we can talk to them about what our objectives are, what our pillars are for our district, and then what our roadmap is for the next five years. So we've been going out and having those conversations, Jamie, Mr. Beck, and myself, for the last two weeks, so we're really excited about that. We're getting really good feedback from some of those. We are also scheduling all of our, um, I want to say, objective meetings, our committee meetings. We've already had those scheduled on the calendars and who's gonna be doing what, and so we're really moving along on those, uh, on those CSIP standards, so we're excited about that. But we just wanted to give you a little bit of updates that we have already started going out and, and speaking to the schools as well.
Okay, next up is the CTA, Community Teacher Association, report.
Now, here?
Perfect.
All right, well, good evening. We have some staff shout-outs. I have several pages here, so bear with me. But, all good information. We'll start at Blanchard. They want to give a shout-out to Cal Ainsworth and Chelsea Gillan for putting together a fir-, their first annual paint night for families. It was amazing. At the central admin office here, shout-out to Ms. Willette Brookins for always being calm and cool and collected when answering the phone and receiving guests at CAO. Central Academy wanted to give a shout-out to CMS. They say, over the years, the CMS staff has been outstanding at coming over to Academy to check in with their previous students that are with them. This year, they have had multiple teachers from CMS reach out to them to come see them and remind the students that they still care about them and to check in. At Clifford, Title I teachers Amy Mays and Amber Wellen and Jill Erhan put together a fun Title I family night. Clifford teachers from each grade level shared reading and math games, parents could play with their child. Each child got to pick out several free books. In addition to a local author, Lee Rampley came and gave away a signed book to each family. The Cape Public Library, Cape Conservation Department, and Prevention First from Southeast also came and had engaging activities for the children. Families could also, they end the night by getting a dollar-off ice cream treat from Poppy Sweet Treats. The fourth grade teachers, Ms. Bradshaw, Ms. Enders, Mrs. Lacy, and Ms. Kitchen planned a fun and engaging Glow Day for their students to create excitement for the upcoming math test. Students worked on math and reading skills in a blacklight room while wearing cool clothes and jewelry that glowed, they were, uh, ready to glow for the math test. At the Early Childhood Center, they want to thank the, everyone for approaching this busy time of year with a positive attitude. Thanks to Cassie Laveley, Caroline Pacheco, Shonda, Chandra Holder for being long-term substitutes in Ms. Lisa's room for the remainder of the year. Thanks to all who do what it takes every day to meet the needs of our youngest students. Thank you for, to the higher professionals, it couldn't be done without them. Thanks to all the people who cover duties and buses when people are sick. At Franklin, they wanted to give a shout-out to the school. They had a parent involvement committee. They hosted a successful event called Puppies and Pasta Night. Parents and students were invited to a night of free spaghetti dinner and doggy activities. The students were able to visit dogs brought by Simo Pets, decorate dog treats with Mississippi mutts, visit a Cape Girardeau canine, Yuki was the name, create a paw with chalk or paint, play games, and do activities. Students and parents enjoyed the night at Franklin Playground and Cafeteria. Excellent work was done coordinating the event, great connections were made with parents. At Jefferson, shout-outs to Ms. Maxfield is always going above and beyond for her students and team. She's always willing to help when needed. Ms. Maxfield takes learning to a higher level and helps her students achieve anything they set their minds to. Ms. Dameron, Tara Dameron at the pre-K level, is an amazing co-teacher. She works hard every day to make sure the students have all the tools they need to be successful. She is kind and thoughtful. Morgan Shador is a wonderful teaching assistant. She is working with some very challenging one-on-one students this year, but is always up for the challenge. She gives her best and works hard to make sure her students are supported. And there's another shout-out at our school to the third and fourth grade teachers. They've faced many challenges along the way and have never given up, and we're very blessed to have amazing first-year teachers, because we do have several in those grades. Thank you to our amazing TA staff. They work incredibly hard and support our teachers so much, and we love them. At the middle school, Ms. Seawall has been worked, been an outstanding member to our math team this year. Her support, outgoing personality, and cheer has made all the difference in the sixth-grade halls. I will be forever grateful of her friendship. First-year teachers are a blessing to us all. Way to rock your first year. That was from Ms. Whitehead. Ms. Shunover, I think is how you say it, has been a great partner without her input and help with our parent communications. Without her input and help with our parent communications, she has made our first year upstairs a better place to be. Her kindness and happy personality make our halls a great place to be. Way to rock your first year. And that was from Ms. Whitehead as well. Ms. Hartman has made, or yes, Ms. Hartman has made, really impacted all of our lives. She can be counted on for advice and encouragement even on the worst of days. She has been an amazing friend and unofficial mentor to so many of us, and her smiles are contagious. I've loved having you in our hallways. And that's also from Ms. Whitehead. So she, then we also have Ms. Hartman from, Coach Radicki gave Ms. Hartman a shout out, saying that she's a wonderful teacher to someone and everyone looks up to her. She's great at giving advice and helping others, even if she isn't having the best day. She's so thankful for her friendship, and it's been a wonderful addition to the building. So a few other updates for CTA I wanted to share with you. We elected our officers for next year. So I will be president, Tyler Loppi from Jefferson. Vice President elected was Shannon Bergoff. She's from Blanchard. Secretary, Shannon Ritter from CHS. Treasurer, Amy Mays from Clipper. Membership and fundraising chair, Cecily Masters from Blanchard. Salary and welfare chair, Marshall Medlin from CHS. And since it is for my building, I was wondering, we are having a showcase night, PBL Showcase Night. Working on the flyers for that. Is it okay if I pass these around to y'all or if you would like to? Um, we're inviting all to come. We're going to showcase all our projects that our building does. We'll do, that's on May sixteenth. We're trying to get some more food trucks. That's been my job, just to make it a fun, family-engaging event and showing what our school has to offer and what our students have been learning. So that is what I have for you. If you guys have any questions.
Where will this be at again?
It will be at JE.
At JE?
Yep, at our school. And so, yeah, we're going to have, it's just about an hour, and they'll just show off what our PBL projects are. Yeah. So if you could come, we would love it. The students would love to show off what they, what they've been learning. So anything else for me? All right, well, thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, next up is our instructional technology update.
All right, let me see if my, I've been trying to get this thing to work properly. See if I can get it to work. All right, so just wanted to give you guys a little update on kind of some of the things that we've been up to here lately, along with working on C SIP and budget and some other things. We got to go to, got invited to the Imagine Learning Conference, which we use a lot of products by Imagine Learning, including our, our in-district benchmark testing that we use to kind of gauge what we do throughout the year. Instead of waiting on the math test, we use that. And we also use Edge Annuity at the high school level, at CA, and in multiple other uses here in the past. But they got us to come and to speak on our implementation of Galileo and then some of the things, processes that we have that we do after the test with our teachers. So we got to speak for about an hour on that, and we got to hear some other speakers as well. And other PD, summer's coming. And so we wanted to let you guys know and let the teachers know that we have some summer sessions coming up. In June, we've got some, what I call WOW. I just made that up today because it was a wide open workshop. I didn't know what we were going to do. And so what I did was invite teachers to say anything that you guys have, whether it's curriculum, tech, assessment, anything that you guys want to do, you can come in. And we can either set up a customized workshop or do whatever we need with that. And then in August, whenever it's time to come back, we're going to do some specific ed tech ones, ones on Galileo and those assessments, since we will be rolling that out into the high school as well this year. But we've been testing it in the fifth through eighth grade this year, and they're going to move up the ladder. And then another product that we use is teacher-made, and it allows teachers to take some of the resources that we have on paper and make them available. And so, you know, we've got some of those workshops and things that might take teachers some time to grade and give feedback on. This does it very quickly. And so that feedback back to the students very quickly. And so we're going to have some sessions on those specific things. And then, whoops, that was a link. Okay, and then here as well with curriculum, we've got math expressions, which is our new K through, let's see here. We go up to sixth grade with math expressions now. And they are, K four is going to be fully implemented in this next year. Blanchard, K four has been doing it this year. And so we're going to sit down and have some PD sessions in August before school starts and then throughout the year as well. But those are coming up as well. So that's what we've been up to here lately in the last couple of weeks. You guys have any questions? You guys want to come to any of those sessions too? Feel free, we'll email me, we'll sign you up, teach you all about it.
I have a slightly off-topic question potentially.
Sure.
So I heard a story last week, I was down in Jacksonville, Florida for work, and a colleague at their school, they had a kid who got busted using ChatGPT
Oh, yeah.
For just basically writing essays and homework. Is there any mechanism we have as technology and AI continues to evolve to like deal with that or plans to deal with that?
Not quite yet. It's, it's, K sixteen, this is an issue that we're dealing with. And what my favorite thing so far is that the ChatGPT detector said that the declaration of independence was ninety-six percent likely to be created by ChatGPT. So we don't have a good way yet to figure out how to detect that.
Right.
However, you know, there's always the good old use of Google Docs and seeing that we can see revision history. And so that's what we're, that's the discussion that I'm having with teachers is go check that revision history because copy and paste, it can't get twelve pages of work in three seconds worth of time. And so just good old.
I had read one thing about, because this is AI technology. One of the things that they're working on currently is, is they can put that, that document back into like a program like ChatGTP or, and then they can identify, you ask the question, is this written by so-and-so? So I know that that's trying to be developed right now for educators.
Yeah.
But there's also some usage for chat, chat as well. I think for, for learning experiences on how to write and some of those other things, as long as they're not using it as their own product.
Right. It's amazing.
So there's a variety of ways you can use that product.
I mean, it's. It's a great way to create prompts.
Yeah.
For writing, you know, just generating that, you know, for a teacher's sake, you know.
We have to embrace some of this technology because if you, if you look at it, we've had this conversation in the next year or less, we're going to be dealing with a lot of different things within AI. So I just think it's important that we also embrace some of those things and how to use it as a learning tool as well for, for our, our students and our staff because it makes us more efficient as well. So we just, we can't be afraid of it. We have to be able to dig into it.
Microsoft has been into all of their products.
Google is all of those products.
We've got to learn how to navigate it just like we do any other technology.
Sure. It'll be the next revolution, really, you know, industrial revolution. I mean, it's going to be that next process. Fortunately, we just have to be able to be prepared for it.
Yeah, I've seen some news articles on how employers are going to be wanting.
They want that.
Potential employees to know how to use it. So we've been talking about it a lot at the university.
How to use it effectively because it will make their jobs more efficient, cost-saving. I mean, it's going to, there's a lot of getting used to that, that technology.
But it's also coming at a good time with, with, you know, the amount of employment issues that are out there. And so, you know, making our students more efficient and give them the skills to do that is what is going to make them successful.
Thank you.
Good question.
That was a good.
Uh, up next, we have treasure and finance report, and all of our finance people are at a conference.
Yes, she is at a conference for business leaders, sharpening their skills. So I am left with the report. Beginning March balance is twenty-four million, twenty-four point three million. Our tax receipts are winding down. What we're getting now are the linked with tax receipts, two point six, two million coming into revenues, two, two point oh in expenses. We have a one point three in transfer. Any fund balance in the general fund is twenty-three point six million dollars. We'll start getting, or we'll continue to get state aid and some of those other things as the year winds down. But for our tax receipts, the bulk of our money is in, pardon, cash and investment details listed below. And we're in a pretty good shape. Debt service, we have a big payment there. March and September are two debt service payments.
Any questions? All right, moving on to support services report.
For food and nutrition, you'll see several things next month coming to you. So we have all of our bids out for our food products and milk and bread and other items. So that'll be brought to you then. We took a team to a workshop last week where we are revamping our EOP, our emergency operation plans and updating those. It's part of our M sub six work, and that'll be pushed out to the buildings here very soon. And it'll bring everything up into line with NIM's language. So the same type of formats and language that our first responders use, our emergency operation plans, we'll, we'll go right in with them. And from a building standpoint, we are busy working away right now. That's all I have unless you have any questions.
Okay, next is the district-wide athletics report.
I had AI produce my report. A couple of things, our high school volleyball and football Tuesday will be holding camps in early May. Football is next week, right here at the junior high at the Independence and Caruthers Field. Volleyball the following week. We'll be signing up possible players for our fall leagues for that. So you'll be seeing some information about that go out. It's also being used to instruct coaches on techniques our high school staff would like to see implemented. So it's a, it's an important part of our continued improvement in those areas. Elementary, middle schools, track and fields winding down. Numbers for that last month were a little inflated. I told you, I reported to you guys, hey, we had a hundred and sixty. Well, as those kids came to track practice and continued on in track practice. As an old track coach, I realized those numbers do tend to go down. So, but Kate Parks from Rick has, has told me this is way more numbers even than they've had previously. So even though those were higher at the signups, there are still quite a few more than they've had before. Baseball begins next week with games, and softball will begin two weeks later. We have five baseball teams, third and fourth grade, and two fifth, sixth grade. Same breakdown for softball, but the age differences are different. Third, third through fifth for one age group and six through eight for the other. We have several high school softball players that are acting as coaches. So that's a big, big plus. In fact, Sam is, did that for soccer as well. He's doing our All-Star team right now. So having those high school influences, those ballplayers is just awesome. We really appreciate our new hire, Jessica Compass, the softball coach, has been instrumental in implementing some of those things. So she's been helping out a lot. Elementary, middle school night on Thursday at both baseball and soccer. We welcome you out. Our current youth soccer and baseball teams have been invited to run the bases or scrimmage at half. We're doing it at the same night, just so happened we had one, one night where we had both of them on campus. So we decided to do it that night. So you're welcome to come to that. Our high school, junior high athletics, I just wanted to report to you guys a couple of things. April's kind of an interesting month. We don't have any district results yet, and some of our conference tournaments are coming up. But I did want to talk to you a little bit about our strength and conditioning program. It's been an area of our department that's targeted intentionally over the past two years. And I wanted to share with you some, some numbers that bear fruit of that labor. As you can see, this chart put together by Maryam Jane Russell shows where our numbers have, have been and are going. The numbers itself, athletic fitness first, intro to athletic fitness. I'll tell you, the intro to athletic fitness classes is mainly geared towards freshmen, but doesn't necessarily mean it has to be freshmen, it's just people that haven't had any kind of strength training previously. So they have the ability to go in there and learn the lifts before actually doing the lifts, which is very important. And then the athletic fitness class is our strength and conditioning classes. As you see, in two thousand twenty-one, I had a pretty, pretty bad dip there. Two thousand twenty-two is Coach King's first year and Coach Neal's first year implementing some of that at the junior high. As you can see, there's a significant jump to two thousand twenty-three, and these are our projected numbers for two thousand twenty-four. As of right now, those that have signed up for those two classes, that could grow from that. And we also see those numbers growing as, as more and more classes have been implemented at the junior high for, for strength and conditioning. I believe this is twofold. Number one, our coaches have been pretty intentional about what their student athletes, about the need for, for a year-long strength and conditioning. And our dedicated strength staff, Coach King and Coach Neal's are, are far and beyond some of the best in the, in the business. And I'm, I'm glad Coach King's not here to hear me say that about him because his head has gotten real big. He's, they are really awesome. Coach Neal's classes are full and getting fuller. His impact has been astounding. I know you're, Bryce, did you share that information with the board previously about his impact with some of our freshmen?
We didn't share the individual results, but just to sum it up, he was the most recognized mentor, so to speak, for all of the high schools. So the most students from the high school level recognized him as being their trusted goal.
It's pretty fascinating.
Speaks volumes within itself, so.
Yes, absolutely.
Which isn't surprising a bit because when you look at how many, he is as passionate about the captain of the football team as he is somebody who plays girls softball or JV tennis. He doesn't care. And so, you know, he's amazing.
He has been an excellent addition to the, for our Tigers for sure. Coach Neal's is a perfect match at the junior high as well. I mean, he, he, I'm telling you, I taught junior high for twelve years. All right, I cannot smell anything. All right. And I'm telling you, he is a special individual. He, he does a great job of that. Mr. Cook has done a fantastic job of modifying the schedule for junior high to get him in front of more kids. Each year, he's done that. So we really appreciate all the work they've done at the junior high as well. And they work well together. They have a program. They transition those kids from the junior high to the high school because that's where we tend to lose some kids. As you guys know, if they've been in the district for a while, so that's a fantastic way that, and they continue to work on that as well, an improvement. A, a big thing, I just want to thank the board, the school district for seeing the, the need and really putting an emphasis on, on strength and conditioning.
Something to note here too is that there's eleven hundred students at the high school, and almost five hundred of them have signed up for one of these classes.
Oh, my gosh, that's awesome.
So it's huge numbers.
And how many of those are in zero hour?
So his zero hour numbers, I would say this year, that this doesn't, we don't have zero hour in this numbers. No, they are. So this is by course, so it is, it is a zero hour. But right now, his numbers in zero hour are really in the thirties and forties.
Okay.
So, and that's six AM on the board.
Right, that's what I was going to say. Like people volunteer to go to school at six AM to hang out with him. And so if you've got teenagers hanging out with you at six AM, you're doing something right. Or illegal, I don't know which, but I think in this case, it's something wrong. Just kidding.
That's all, if I have any questions, I'm sorry.
It's awesome.
Okay, moving on to board reports. The MSBA delegate report, were you going to cover that?
Casey said there wasn't anything to report for the delegate.
Okay, and then for legislative report?
So the legislative report, busy time of year. There's two more weeks left in the legislative session, and there's a lot of activity going on. Talking to our legislators and MSBA directors. They say there's a lot of pressure to put a lot of different bills through. Everyone's got their pet projects, and they're trying to get it either heard or read, voted on, passed, whatever. Some things to watch for. So the Senate is getting ready to start debating the school athletic participation piece. The House passed it two weeks ago, I believe. So House Bill one eighty-three was basically labeled as the Save Women's Sports Act. And basically, it would prohibit public school districts or charter schools from allowing students grade six through twelve, public and private, as well as post-secondary, to allow basically male students to participate in female activities. They have to stay within their biological, biologically assigned sex, gender. The only other piece to that is that if a female wants to participate in a male sport, the only way that is allowed is if that particular sport is not offered at the school. So if, for instance, they have male track and a girl wants to run track, she can do that if they don't have a female track team. Otherwise, she would have to run with the girls. There is a piece in there about practicing. As long as they're not competing, they can practice. So again, that's passed the House and it's going to the Senate for debate. A couple of other pieces that, sorry, finding, get back. They're still looking at charter school expansion. They're still trying to define some pieces in that, sizes of the school districts. There's a piece in there about allowing homeschool or virtual school students to participate in Misha-sponsored activities. They're still working through some of the, the language there. There's some talk about moving to a four-day school week, but that would have to be voted on by the citizens within the, the school district. That still hasn't made it to the floor yet.
Not only the four-day school week, but also if you are less than a hundred and seventy-four calendar days in session as a student, you would have to have a vote of the people. And right now, we're sitting at one sixty-nine, so this will have an impact on our district if that passes, unless they change that number. So.
Let's see, some of the other things that were coming up. I guess those, those are the big ones that, the other one that went, is being held over probably for debate for next year, is moving school board elections from April to November. They're trying to, at least everything that's been put out there, they're trying to politicize school board elections, which that's probably the least political entity that you could or should be involved in. But by putting it on the general election, it would definitely politicize it and could change, you know, how school boards are run or how school districts are run. So, but those are some of the things to be watching for. Like I said, the, the session goes for two more weeks. A lot of things are going to be pushed through, so probably have a long list of items next month on any changes that would affect us from Jeff City. So, and as long, and as far as the, the Save Women's Sports Act, the US House voted on it last week, and it passed there as well. So it's going on to the Senate and then to the president if, if it passes the Senate. So I think there's a nationwide push to, to kind of preserve women's sports from, which I mean, Title Nine, you know, if, if you start doing away with some of that stuff, it, it really changes what women have been fighting for and people have been fighting for, for equal opportunities, so.
There's also Parents Bill Rights Act that's out there, and it's been heavily debated. It's on its nineteenth version, from what I understand. It's about, all about transparency within, in the school system, so. It's about, all about transparency within the school system, so keep an eye out for that.
But it seems like every time they read it, it changes. They either put something else in or take something else out. The language is changing all the times. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Next is the Cape Public School Foundation report, which, actually, I have that. The foundation is hosting a golf tournament on May fifteenth at Cape Country Club. There are AM and PM flights with team spots available, and there are still some sponsorship opportunities as well. If you know anyone that wants to sponsor a golf tournament and provide money for the foundation, that would be awesome if you want to play. You can sign up as well. You do not want to be on your team. The foundation has also been helping with end-of-year activities for elementary buildings, Tiger Lilies, Air Force JROTC, and esports. And they're also gearing up for over ten thousand dollars in scholarship presentations at the end-of-year banquets for the seniors. So that's all of that. Okay, next on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda, and this includes minutes of previous meetings from March twenty-seventh and April thirteenth. Payment of bills, the twenty twenty-three summer school application, and the career ladder plan.
Still moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none?
Who was the second?
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next up is new business. So the first thing is a second reading and approval of board policies. BDDB two, BDDH one, IGCD, and IGCD A. And that, those have been provided to you already.
Still moved?
Second.
Any discussion, any questions?
Question.
I have one question. On, on the BDDH one updated public participation policy, do we know what it was before? Like, when it says twenty business days to kind of come on, did it used to be something different? Like, I guess that one doesn't seem to have any sort of like scratch.
Strikeouts. Well, and we got, our policy editor did this, and we got this back as a clean copy without the strikeouts, and we didn't have time to modify this. And so I apologize in advance for that. But we went over this pretty thoroughly. What we had is a one-day notification, but we moved it to a five-day to be standardized it really and give us enough time to prepare. And talk, but as far as other big significant.
That other part that he's talking about, about the.
Twenty business days to meet with the superintendent? Is that the part you're talking about?
Right. That, that's, that whole, the grievance, the grievance, that's, that's a whole new procedure, that part. You could, I mean, you can look at the other policy, the old ones online. But, yeah, she, when she went to make the changes, she made all the changes.
Yeah, she just cleaned it up.
Yeah.
And that's not typical, she usually doesn't do that.
No, she just, maybe it's like.
I don't wanna say it, just because twenty, it gives a thing about twenty days to request, within twenty business days, the superintendent can get a written request and give somebody a meeting. And then after that, they could go request to talk to the board. It just seemed like a long time. And again, if it was something that was super weighty, I'm sure maybe there's that much time required to kind of vet it and figure out what's going on. I just didn't know what it was before. We were saying that's all new, that whole part's new.
Yeah. I'd been different on that, if you want.
I don't know if there was a right number in my head, it just seemed like a long time, depending on what it was. And I'd say it has to take twenty days because you just have up to that amount. But it just seemed, it seemed in contrast to the five day. Well, it used to be our one day and then our five day, five day now, and then twenty seems like a long time. But I didn't know if you had any thoughts on that.
Yeah, I kind of, I saw the same thing, and I thought, man, twenty business days is a month, basically. And then they have to ask to be on the next agenda. Well, if that's, if you just missed the cutoff, then you're another month out before, you know, and that's two months, that's a long time.
Is there something reasonable you want to propose? More reasonable, I assume?
I think, what, a week to meet with the superintendent or does he need, or is that, I mean, you tell me what the schedule looks like, is that?
I think, I think give me two weeks to, you know, ten business days to resolve the conflict. I think that's reasonable.
Okay.
I do, I agree, twenty, twenty days is.
I don't know. I wish that she had left all of that on there.
I don't know if that's legal.
I was trying to find the, find the original one that they, that they sent that first time.
If we knew what that said before, we'd know. Maybe, maybe we wouldn't.
And I say it not to tie your hands either. I mean, again, my guess is that you'd want to meet with somebody as soon as you reasonably could anyway. And so the idea that the far end of it is twenty days is a long time, but my guess is that would very rarely become the case.
Yeah, I don't think that'd be the case.
And so I, I mean, I'm not trying to belabor this one. I just wondered when I saw that, I don't, I was curious, I didn't see any strikeout version, and I was like, I wonder what it was before.
Well, I mean, it's easy to see if you look up their first board policy directory.
I don't have to reuse that link in my life.
Well, and it says this site can't be reached.
Oh, wow.
Vindicate.
Not quite as easy.
I already tried that just earlier. Just kidding, I didn't lay it this.
The, the original, the original one would say why they made those changes. I'm not sure.
I'm okay, I'm okay. My preference would be just recognizing that we're gonna try to accommodate people to the extent we can do things expeditionally. But I'm sure.
That's our practice anyway.
Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's, I'm thinking, though, that there was a change in law with the community engagement. That's why we have that new community engagement policy. So I'm just, I don't know. That is something that they added, and I'm not sure why they added that. We did not come up with that. I don't know why MSBA specifically put that, and that's what I'm wondering, if that is in the law. They added all of that about the twenty business days.
Let me get that report that says that what's mandatory and what's not.
Legislate mandate to allow residents to request agenda items. MSBA encourages districts to reconsider policies that allow for public comments by residents.
I saw something about five business days, but I didn't see anything about the twenty, but I was trying to read this on my phone, too.
It was Senate Bill six eighty-one.
That was the big omnibus bill.
Yeah.
No problem, just read that real quick.
I mean, we can pull it and not approve it, and I can find out from MSBA why, why the twenty days. I mean, I can't imagine MSBA just pulling twenty days out of the hat.
And I, it's not a big deal to me, but I guess I look at this and think, if it creates the perception that we don't want people to be involved and give us feedback, to me, like, I don't think that is the perception that certainly I want to give, and I don't think this board wants to give that perception. And so if we're trying to kind of put up, seemingly put up hurdles to people coming in and saying, hey, I have issue or I have something that we need to talk about or resolve, I just think that kind of gives the wrong optic. Because I don't think that's accurate here in the first place.
Agreed.
Well, this.
If you made me wait twenty business days, I'd forget what I even want to talk to you about, probably, if I'm not, so I'd say it was a better time.
Agenda items, well, and see, remember, we have that brand-new community engagement policy. And so there's going to be an easy way for them to get involved in things through that community engagement committee.
That's part of a CISA plan that Ms. Talley's trying to be sparing.
Agenda items must be directly related to the governance or operation of the district.
Right, but that's like, so, Rod, you gotta drive a truck through it. Like, who decides whether or not it's related to governance or operate? I mean, everything's kind of the operation of the district, I would argue, like, that involves a kid or a parent or a staff member.
I just, I don't know if we can change that to twenty days. I don't know if that is.
They can adopt it, and we can bring it back if we are, and we can discuss it next month then.
Yes, so this, this.
Adopt it and find out if we can change it to ten days?
For the commit, yeah, the committee package, section one points, or one six two point oh five eight dash RSMO requires, so basically, that's the law, the state statute that put those items in there, and that's why all of that was not scratched out.
Well, that was all added, that was all included.
Right, that's what I'm saying. That's all, that's all brand new based on that state statute, so.
So that's what is making.
From the Senate Bill six eighty-one.
That is a part of that state statute.
It probably is, but you could improve that.
That's what I mean, again.
And I think it needs to go back to the public engagement committee for discussion, you know, and let that, let it come through there and then present it to the board.
So do we want to table this, or do we want to go ahead and vote on it? Okay, we've had motions, right? All right, so let's go ahead and vote on this. All approved?
Yes, yes.
Aye.
All right.
You need to ask if there are any.
Any objections?
Because I can't hear what they all said at the same time.
All right, motion carries. Next is the approval of a resolution authoring the issuance and sale of general obligation refunding bonds. So the motion to be considered is, I'm gonna read the whole little paragraph, "To approve a resolution authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of general obligation refunding bonds, series twenty twenty-three of the Cape Girardeau School District, providing for the levitation and collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on said bonds as they become due, and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith." Can I add a motion?
Still moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
This is just one of those rare times we can take advantage of the market, and it looks good right now, favorable to the district. These are callable bonds from twenty thirty-one to twenty thirty-five is what we're refinancing. And we look to save anywhere between, depending on where the market's at Thursday, it's been highly volatile this week, from what, I was talking to Lorenzo earlier today. But we're looking at like maybe three fifty to five hundred. So well worth, what we're, what we're authorizing them to do is a minimum threshold, at least one and a half percent. And, and actually, that's the state threshold, and then two percent is Stiefel's threshold, and he's saying it looks like it's going to be closer to two and a half percent. And if it's not on Thursday because of the volatility, they won't do it. They'll wait, they'll hold it. So we're in good hands with Stiefel.
What is the, is the term on this gonna be the same, or are we lengthening it, or what?
The terms are the same.
Okay.
Yep. It's just a replacement.
Okay.
Any other discussions or questions? All in favor?
Yes.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, do we have any informations, information and proposal from board members?
I just have one thing. Just want to congratulate you and Mr. Ritter and Mr. Cook on their reelection to the board for a three-year term. Also, congratulations to you being elected by the board as the president. Mr. Ritter is the vice president. And Mr. Walker, thank you for serving last year as the president.
Yeah, my pleasure, thank you.
Anything else? Can I get a motion?
Oscars night.
Oh, yes.
This Friday.
Yes.
Right, what time, Christmas, six?
Doors open at six, dinner starts at six-thirty, and the program starts at ten thirty.
I think we have over four hundred registrations.
All right.
We're at over a hundred, yeah, people.
Pushing five hundred registration?
Yeah, we're at four hundred, but we were at about two sixty last year.
Oh, wow, that's fantastic.
People are excited.
It's gonna be a great night.
Also, just so we get this in our heads, when is graduation? Because that's gonna happen before May nineteen.
The Friday.
Is it at six o'clock?
I believe it is, I guess.
Six or six thirty.
I'll get, I'll get the information after you.
Push it back a little bit, get out of the, there's so much heat.
All right, anything else? Can I, with no further business to come before the board, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Still moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned.